Peter, why don't you take it?
Yeah, I will. Good evening, everyone. This is a regular meeting of the Fairhaven Zoning Board of Adjustment. Adequate notice to this meeting has been given pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act. At the time of the board reorganization in January of this year, the board adopted its regular meeting schedule for the year. Notice of the schedule was sent to and published in the Asbury Park Press on January nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, and the Two River Times on January twentieth, two thousand and twenty-two. That notice was also posted on the bulletin board in the Borough Hall and has remained continuously posted there as required by the statute. A copy of the notice is and has been available to the public and is on file in the Office of the Borough Clerk. A copy of the notice has also been sent to such members of the public as have requested such information in accordance with the statute. Adequate notice having been given, the Board Secretary is directed to include this statement in the minutes of this meeting. Roll call please, Sandy.
Mr. Nick Chesney?
Here.
Ms. Quigley?
Yeah.
Mr. Ridgeway?
Here.
Mr. Ryan?
Here.
Dr. Lauffer?
Here.
Mr. Kinsella?
Here.
Mr. Shavetti?
Here.
And Mr. Leader?
Here. And I'm going to read our statement to the public. Before proceeding with the formal meeting tonight, I'd like to say a few words to the applicants, their experts in the audience about the role and authority of the Fairhaven Zoning Board of Adjustment. The board is a separate and independent municipal legal entity and its limited authority is specifically set forth in the Borough Ordinances and the New Jersey Municipal Land Use Law. It is quasi judicial in nature and the members of the board are unpaid volunteers appointed by the mayor and council. The zoning board does not enact the Borough land use laws and regulations. The Borough Council does that. The zoning board does not enforce the land use laws of the Borough Fairhaven. This is the responsibility of the Borough Code Enforcement Officer. This board deals with appeals for relief from the requirements of the Borough's land use laws or denials by the zoning officer. An applicant is never entitled to a variance, also known as an exception to the zoning regulations, but must meet specific criteria required by the New Jersey Municipal Land Use Law and the Fairhaven Ordinances by satisfying certain required standard of proof. The board has no authority to waive these requirements. The burden of proof is always on the applicant to show that he or she is entitled to specifically requested. The applicant must prove that a deviation from the regulations will advance the purposes of the ordinance and that the deviation would substantially outweigh any detriment to his own plan. Variances related to the future use of the land are not intended or authorized to remedy temporary or unique personal situations. Okay, Pete, I think the first matter on the agenda was something that's been withdrawn.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Chairman, we were... On the Burke matter? Yeah, wait a second. Hold a second, Mike. Pledge allegiance. Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize.
All messed up. I pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance. To the flag. For the United States. Of the United States. America.
America.
And to the Republic. For which it stands.
France.
One nation.
Nation.
Under God. Indivisible.
Indivisible.
With liberty.
Justice.
For all. Okay. All right, we will get this together. Yeah, Burke is the first application which has been withdrawn, I believe.
We got Mike.
Chairman, we received the letter from Mr. Burke's counsel, John Sardo, dated January twenty, indicating that the applicant has decided not to proceed with the pending application and requests that it be withdrawn without prejudice and any further communications should be sent to John and Remy Burke directly. So we started the hearing on this. I'd suggest that we take a motion to dismiss the matter. Assuming you want to do this, dismiss it without prejudice. We didn't make a determination on the merits. And then normally, if this was withdrawn prior to the commencement of the hearing, we would just go with the motion in the minutes. But I'm probably going to do a very short resolution, just so there's something in the file, being that we started the hearing on the application. But I would suggest we take a motion to dismiss the matter without prejudice. As a result of withdrawal.
Does anybody have any questions about the request to be drawn without prejudice? Okay. I'll make the motion that we... That we withdraw the matter. What are we doing?
Dismissed without prejudice as a result of the withdrawal?
Yes, yes, that, that. I want that.
Second?
Mr. Nick Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Quigley?
Yes.
Mr. Ridgeway? Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Dr. Lauffer?
Yes.
Mr. Shavetti?
Yes.
And Mr. Leader?
Yes.
The second matter.
Go ahead, Michael.
The second matter on the agenda, Mr. Chairman, is the Nick application, thirty-three Cedar Avenue.
Terrific. If you're here for the Nick application, please use the raise your hand feature and the Board Secretary will bring you forward into the panel. Both the applicant, any experts, or anyone else testifying on behalf of the Nick matter.
While we're setting up, Mr. Chairman, I'll just indicate for the record that I reviewed the notice materials. The board has jurisdiction here and considered the matter. The notice materials appear to be in order. I'll swear in our professionals and then we'll let counsel put his appearance on the record, but I believe there are also a couple of completeness items that the board is going to want to address. So I'm going to swear, Ms. Gable, our professional planner, and Mr. Kennedy, our professional engineer, if you'd each raise your right hand, you swear testimony against the board of your truth, altered nothing but the truth.
I do.
Can we get it? Can we get an I do out of Mr. Kennedy? He's there somewhere.
Yes, I do.
Okay, so the record will reflect that Ms. Gable has been sworn as our professional planner, Mr. Kennedy as her professional engineer. Is Mr. Von Arx with us? Mr. Von Arx?
Sounds like Mr. Von Arx.
We're trying to make a connection. Which somehow doesn't seem to be working very well.
Here we are. We can hear, we can hear you now, Mr. Von Arx, and we can see you.
Thank, thank you very much.
So if you just want to put your appearance on the record, I think we'll, we'll address some completeness items.
Okay. Brooks Von Arx appearing on behalf of Mr. Nick, the applicant in this matter.
Ms. Chairman, do you want to turn it over to Ms. Gable on the completeness items in her review letter?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Remy.
Sure. So the outstanding completeness items are really the Monmouth County Planning Board application, which is pretty typical. We recommended that a waiver be granted for completeness since the property does not fall on the county road. The second item is for freehold, freehold soil conservation district application. We recommend a waiver for completeness purposes only. However, the applicant should be prepared to give testimony regarding whether there be disturbing more than five thousand square feet of soil during their, the hearing, just to confirm whether or not that permit is required for the proposed improvements. And then the other completeness item is the County Health Department application, which is another typical waiver we grant, which we recommend waiver be granted and is not applicable. However, there were two items from the zoning officer's letter regarding the basement and cellar and also to provide a survey. I believe these items have been addressed. Mr. Kennedy, could you confirm whether?
Sure, we did receive a both a boundary survey and topographic survey from a licensed professional surveyor. They were acceptable to my office. Secondly, we have a grading report from Mid-Atlantic Engineering that addresses... Addresses building height from their perspective. So I believe that that would cover it for completeness, being that those two, three items really are present.
So unless the board members have any questions, are you inclined to grant the several completeness waivers that Ms. Gable has outlined for you? So we can move on to the merits, obviously. Once we're in the merits, if you require any of that additional information to make an informed decision, it sounded like most of the items that she listed were not applicable to the particular application. But if you require additional information as we get into the merits, you're always deserved the right to ask for the additional information.
Do any board members have any questions regarding any of the items that are being requested for a waiver? Okay, I think we're okay.
Okay, so I take then that the board has, by unanimous acclamation, granted completeness waivers and we're going to move on to the merits. So, Mr. Von Arx, do you want to mark anything at the outset? Or do you want to go right into your testimony? I know Mr. Kennedy had mentioned a couple of cer, a survey and a topographic plan. Maybe we should mark those so we don't lose sight of those. There was a survey prepared by Charles Surmont, S U R M O N T E, P E and P L S, one sheet, March twelve, two thousand and nineteen, revised March eighteen, two thousand and nineteen. If I have the same copy everyone else does, we'll mark that as A dash one. And there was a topographic plan also submitted by Mr. Surmont, consisting of one sheet dated December nineteen, two thousand and twenty. We can mark that as A dash two. And if there's anything else you'd like to mark now, we can do that, or we can mark as you go along.
I would prefer. I'm sorry, if possible, I would prefer as we go along because then it's more consistent.
Mr. Irene, I have twelve, twenty-nine, twenty for the topographic plan.
Twelve, twenty-nine, twenty? Okay, thank you very much. So A dash two, topographic plan, Charles Surmont, one sheet, twelve, twenty-nine, twenty. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy.
Yeah.
All right, Mr. Von Arx.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, Brooks Von Arx appearing on behalf of Alan Nick, who is the applicant in this matter. He's the owner of thirty-three Cedar Avenue, which is lot nine and block thirty-one. The property is located in the B one zone for residential purposes. It's in the R seven point five zone. Mr. Nick has purchased this property, which is in need of major renovation and as a result of neglect and deterioration over a number of years. He intends to do significant upgrading to the property. And as you will see later on, the proposal is a beautiful, beautiful structure. I would point out at the outset that this property is an oversized lot considerably in this, in this zone. And it's also significantly wider than the ordinance requires. There is a dilapidated old shed in the rear of the property, which my client will remove as a result of the changes to the property. The ultimate result here, we believe, is going to be a fine addition to the neighborhood, which will be totally in keeping and also complimentary to Fisk Chapel, which is next door. I have four witnesses. Mr. Nick himself, who I will ask to testify first, then Dennis Dragon, our project manager from Prestige Design Group, Gregory Demolisky, the engineer from Atlantic Engineering Partners, and Ms. Christine Carphone, who is our land use consultant. So if I may commence with Mr. Nick?
We can swear, Mr. Nick. Before we do that, though, Mr. Von Arx, I thought you indicated he was in the B one zone. I believe. My notes show. Go ahead.
I thought, I thought it was B one.
My notes show B two?
I, I can, my, my note showed B one. I may be incorrect, but we've always believed it would be one.
Lanny, you show B two in your report. Can you speak to this?
Yeah, I believe it's B two. I'm looking through my files right now just to confirm the location. The application material says B two.
The application.
The applicant's plans also say B two.
And the zoning grant denial says B two.
Sorry.
Okay, so we'll subject to further confirmation and we'll assume it's in the B two and we'll go forward at this point? Is that all right, Mr. Von Arx?
Yes, indeed. So I will call, I will call Alan, Alan Nick and ask him to be sworn.
Sir, could you give us your full name, spell your last and your address for the record, please?
I just want to make sure you guys can hear me. I'm, if I'm sitting next to Brooks, but I muted myself because of the reverberation. Can you guys hear me okay?
You're fine.
Okay, great. My name is Alan Nick, A L A N N I C K. My home address is twenty-three Wind Hill Way, Holndale, New Jersey, zero seven seven three three.
Okay, and if you'd raise your right hand, please, I'm going to swear in. You do swear testimony against the board, it'll be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Thank you. Mr. Von Arx?
Thank you, Mr. Irene.
Mr. Nick, when did you purchase this property?
In two thousand and nineteen.
And when you, when you purchased it, what condition did you find the dwelling to be in?
It was deteriorated, dilapidated. There were a ton of dead trees, which I had Avery trees removed for us through, he was working with the, I think, the superintendent. The facade is somewhat crumbling, the porch is falling down. The building somewhat looks to sway a certain direction. It's certainly uninhabitable.
Has it been inhabited in recent years to your knowledge?
No.
What was your intent when you purchased this derelict building?
Well, my wife has always wanted to live in Fairhaven, but this house doesn't have enough storage, so we will build it and sell it.
The reports that have come in from the board's professionals raise a couple of questions. One has to do with the shed in the rear of the yard. What's your intent with respect to that?
To completely remove it.
And how about the driveway which exists now? I believe it was gravel or may still be gravel of some kind.
Tear that up and either do new landscaping or new driveway up to the garage.
Is it, we have the architect coming next, but is it your intent to utilize as much as you can, whatever there is to be salvageable in this building?
Yes, all the bones looked okay. I would say, I would say the concrete slab is okay. There's a few things that are okay, but the facade itself I need to replace. There's, the roof will be replaced, significant upgrades.
Is it, is it fair to say that the interior of the, of the house is not exactly up to modern standards?
No. I'm sure the wiring isn't up to modern standards. I'm sure there's a lot that isn't up to modern standards.
Do you have a picture of what you envision the house will look like?
I do.
And could you show that, please? And then, Mr. Irene, we'll mark this as A three.
This was, this was submitted, was it not?
I believe it. I believe it may have been.
So A three is a rendering of the post house?
Exactly.
Do we know who prepared that?
This was my architect, Dennis from Prestige, Prestige Designs.
Mr. Nick, could you turn the volume down on your device?
My device is muted. Let me see.
Right now, the, the volume itself, though, because one's filtering and that's why it's bouncing back and forth.
Is that better?
Yes.
Is that better?
Okay.
Yes, the echoing is gone.
Sorry. Sorry. I think it's much better from our end as well.
Mr. Von Arx? Yes. I, I want to ask you if you could please frame for the board the variances that are triggered by the application. I'm a little confused as the, as the need for relief. And I think we need to sort of orient ourselves to where exactly this proposed plan deviates from the ordinances.
Sure. Taking an overall view of, of the application, the area of the lot is eighty-one hundred and thirty-nine square feet, which exceeds the minimum requirement of seventy-five hundred. That's an additional nine percent over the minimum. The lot width is eighty-nine feet as opposed to a sixty-foot requirement. That's a forty-eight percent increase in the width of the lot. The lot depth, however, is ninety-one point five feet, whereas one hundred feet is required by the ordinance. The, the proposed house is proposed to be sixteen point two feet off of the front property line. That is a requirement of thirty feet under the ordinance. The rear yard setback would be twenty-five point five feet, whereas thirty feet is required. Lot coverage is okay. Building coverage seems to be okay. The height of the building is one that my client has wrestled with from the outset. The original plans for the building were considerably higher than it is now. The result that we're coming to ask you for, for approval of is a thirty-two foot height. The floor area, habitable floor area, meets the requirements of twenty-nine hundred and fifty-seven square feet, whereas the ordinance allows three thousand and twenty. The, the ratio, however, is a bit of a problem by point zero one percent. The F A R for this property requires thirty-five, point thirty-five, whereas we are proposing point thirty-six. I think that covers, I think that covers the required variances.
Elena, I'm going to ask you to pull out your zoning table because that's what I was following along with. And I didn't find much of what Mr. Von Arx gave us by way of statistic to line up with what you've got. All of the lot issues, Mr. Von Arx, are pre-existing non-conformities, so I'll dispose of those. I'm seeing four variances based on the sheet that Elena put together in her report. The first is a front yard setback. Yes. She, we're showing on this sheet, twenty foot is the existing setback and sixteen point four is what the proposed setback is. I think you said something different as for the proposed. Can we clarify that issue first?
My notes show sixteen point two. Setback.
The, the plot, this, the site plan says sixteen point four one that I'm looking at.
Yep, that's where I got the measurement from, was from the site plan.
So which one are we going to go with, Mr. Von Arx?
We'll go with what you have.
Sixteen point four. The next variance that I see is a single side yard setback, seven feet being required, five point five existing and five point seven proposed. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. The next is the maximum building height, thirty feet in the zone, thirty-one point six exists, and the proposal is thirty-one point nine?
The proposal is, I believe, thirty-two. If it's thirty-one point nine, so much the better.
I, I think, Mr. Chairman, using.
Depending upon whose measurements you take, it could be as much as thirty-two. We're hopeful that it's thirty-nine point, thirty-one point nine.
Ms. Chairman, I think Mr. Kennedy's supplemental report in terms of the grading calls it out at thirty-two.
Okay, so let's, so let's pause that if that's a matter of how it's measured. And then the last one that I see, which is not marked as a variance, but is the D variance at point three six, where point three five is permitted.
That's correct.
Did I capture them all, four variances?
No.
No?
No, there's the number of stories too, because there's a basement, a half-story basement and a half-story attic. So I put them at three stories where two and a half is permitted.
And is that a pre-existing condition or is that a, a new condition?
Dude, that's pre-existing. There is a, I mean, there is a drop-down attic in the house and there's a basement existing with a walkout. I think on the plans, it shows that we're actually going to make that more of a crawl space attic. I don't, we have no intention of using that space up top and then making the, the cellar as we have it, but a basement as it is, more livable space.
So that third floor calculation may be exacerbated, Mr. Chairman, insofar as you're increasing the space in the habitable basement area.
All right, so, so we can revisit that. There's a lot to understand. What we've started with is we have a structure that's falling down and we've moved into, we're going to save a lot of it and we're going to move on to renovations. So I assume we're going to move on in terms of the testimony so we can understand where the variances come from.
Right. I think those are probably best addressed by our architect.
Yeah, Mr. Von Arx, I just needed to frame the discussion for the board members so they understand what's at issue. I'm ready to proceed in whatever way you'd like from here.
Okay. If, if I can, then I'd like to ask Mr. Dragon to enter the picture here somewhere.
Just two entries on the record, please.
Before we swear, Mr. Dragon, Mr. Chairman, does any, any board members have any questions for Mr. Nick? Or do you want to open it to the public? You want to save that for later?
Not going to open to the public. I assume Mr. Nick isn't done. I don't know. Was that the entirety of Mr. Nick's testimony?
Well, it may be that he can add something as we go through, but I'd like to proceed with our architect, if we may.
I, I think we're fine.
Mr. Dragon, would you give us your full name, spell your last and your address for the record, please?
Dennis Dragon, D R A G O N, fifteen ten John Street, Helmut, New Jersey, oh eight eight.
And if you'd raise your right hand, I swear in, sir? You do swear in testimony against the board of the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. And Mr. Von Arx is going to spread your credentials on the record?
Yes, would you please describe your professional background for the board?
I'm an architect in New Jersey and I am a project director for Prestige Design Group.
And have you had occasion to be involved in other projects such as this?
Yes.
Have you? I'm sorry, go ahead.
I do several residences in Monmouth County.
And have you been involved in this project from the outset?
Yes. Yeah, from the start, over a year with Alan, from when he purchased the property and wanted to renovation work.
And you're familiar with, you're familiar with the, the lot in question?
Yeah, yes. Yes, I. A few times. I checked it. Existing conditions and helped propose the plans.
And you were instrumental in devising the plans that are now before the board?
Yes, as the project director and designer of the plans.
Mr. Dragon, how long have you been licensed or registered architect in the state of New Jersey?
I passed my exams four years ago. I I didn't register with the state. My partner's been registered with the state for six years now.
You're not a registered architect in the state of New Jersey?
After, no, but my firm already had a license. So after passing the exams, I didn't register or pay the insurance yet. But I'm verified with N-CART.
Mr. Von Arx, are you proposing that we accept Mr. Dragon as an expert in architecture?
I'm, I'm proposing that he can testify as to the way in which the plans were devised and he's the project engineer and his firm has been involved in the creation of this project. And I think he's certainly qualified to testify along those lines.
Mr. Dragon, have you ever been accepted by any board in New Jersey as an expert in architecture?
Yes, the state exams. I just didn't register with the state.
Okay, that's not being accepted by a board. Did you prepare these plans?
Our firm prepared the plans. Our registered architect, Ben McMath, he reviews the plans and submitted the plans. I'm a project director.
So you did not, so you didn't prepare the plans, but you're familiar with them?
As a team, we prepared the plans together.
So which one, which one on the team is familiar with the Fairhaven ordinances?
Both of us are very familiar with the project.
Okay, who read the ordinances?
I read all the ordinances and, and my partner checks and reads all the ordinances as well. He reads all the plans and he stamps them, he signs them.
Okay, but you're personally familiar with the Fairhaven ordinances and how we calculate square footage, how we calculate building height? And you're going to testify us those things based on the Fairhaven ordinances, correct?
Yeah. Yes, very familiar. We have been through them thoroughly.
Mr. Von Arx, I'm not inclined to accept Mr. Dragon as an expert in architecture, but if you'd like to describe the plans, I suppose you could do that. Are you asking for him to be accepted as an expert in architecture?
I'm asking that he be allowed to testify as to the development of these plans based on his knowledge of the project and the fact that he is in fact a graduate architect.
Okay, I'm, I'm not going to suggest we accept him as an expert in architecture, but I'm not going to stop him from testifying. Does anybody else have any questions with regard to Mr. Dragon's experience or what we're talking about right now?
Yeah, did you say that you did or did not draw the plans?
We we I draft the plans.
You drew the plans?
I draft the plans, yes.
Okay.
That was not my understanding from your last response. I understood they're prepared by your office and you'd reviewed them and you're familiar with them. I don't know that it matters. We're getting caught up in details. What we typically see is registered architects who are qualified as experts in architecture that have either been previously approved by other boards or are coming in for the first time and put their experience on as architects. What we're talking about is somebody that's involved with the plans, not as an architect, rather as a project manager. And so we're going to hear from him as a project manager that's familiar with the plans. Right now, the issue that's going to come up is familiarity with the ordinances because there's a lot of issues about how these things are measured. So I hope that somebody's going to be able to clarify where we came up with this data so we can get to some final answers.
Do we have a signed copy of the plans somewhere?
Yes, they were submitted.
You have them, Sandy?
Yes, I have signed and sealed, signed and sealed.
Who signed them?
Matthew.
The new Matthew.
Sandy frozen?
I think so.
Okay, so the plans are signed by a different architect, somebody that's in your firm, Mr. Dragon?
He's the principal of our firm, yes.
Okay, and he's not here tonight, right?
He's not here, no. I mean, I could make him available, but no, to my understanding, I was going to represent as the project manager.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Dragon, just one question. So if you you are familiar with how we measure habitable floor area, can you confirm that you measure it in the same way that we don't use it? You know, from construction code, we measure sill plate to sill plate, everything inside. You're aware of that?
It's the sub, you know, the exterior walls were calculated for square footage.
Okay. Thank you. All right, Mr. Von Arx.
Thank you. Mr. Dragon, describe for the board, please, how you found the condition of this house to be when you first encountered it?
When we inspected the house, the house was obviously not lived in for years. The finishes should be replaced. I noticed outside water damage. The roof should be replaced, which concerns me about rotting in the soffits, rotting of some of the, you know, coming down and into the wood. Inside, I would say the same. All the finishes should be replaced. There's a lot of stains. There's mold on the walls. I would say the same about the electric. I would recommend that it all be pulled back to the panel and new service be put in. Not knowing when the last time the house had heat or thing water, I would recommend a full renovation.
Could I just ask, are we? Are we hearing Mr. Dragon on the plans that he prepared or are we hearing him on engineering or architecture or construction practices? I'm a little confused.
I think, given, given his position as the project manager, his observation of the condition of the house is important and he can certainly testify to that.
I agree, Mr. Von Arx. I think you're fine.
Thank you. Mr. Nick indicated that you might be able to save some of the bones so called of the house as part of a renovation project. Is that the way that you and your firm decided you would proceed?
What was that? I'm sorry.
It cut out. The bones of the house still seem pretty much okay. Although there are details that need to be addressed, but you're not, you're not proposing that you demolish the entire structure, are you?
No, the foundation itself seems intact and so does most of the studs and skeleton of the house. It's the the finishes are in need of repairs, which concerns me about some water damage. Anything wood choice in the ceiling should probably be replaced.
Okay. You're familiar with the general design of the house?
Yes, yes. Personally, the design now.
Part of that design involves a garage, which would be part of the southerly, I believe, part of the new dwelling, two car garage. Is that correct?
Yes.
Why was the garage put in that position?
Well, that's where the curb cut coming into the home will be directly and we didn't want to disturb the side yard that the home has because there's not much of a backyard. So we didn't want it to come in from the side. We wanted to bring it directly down underneath the new addition at the at the cellar grade.
What kind of materials do you anticipate using on the construction?
Um, well, Alan and I decided to go with hardy board exterior. You know, we're using vinyl soffit. But Alan had picked a really nice, you know, front door as well as the shutters and windows. And he picked out a really nice garage door to really dress up the home and give it some curb appeal. Then he's replacing the roof, so the whole exterior will be brand new.
Is it? Is it not true that when this project first came under review by myself and others that we expressed some concern about the originally proposed height of the house?
Yeah, we we weren't trying to, you know, bring it any higher than it was. There was need to add in addition to the right, which was slightly wider. And the gable is just about a foot higher than what was existing. So it was our intentions to not make the house any, you know, higher than what's existing.
And in fact, the height of the house was reduced as a result of those discussions. Is that not so?
I believe by the foot. If I'm correct, it was just under a foot. Yes.
Okay.
What are we talking about? So so the original plan was tall?
There was a plan. No, no, I'm, I'm sorry. I'm sorry to interrupt, but Mr. Mr. Nick has a comment on this.
So I'm going to chime in here. I know that our house submittal right now is just shy of thirty two feet. When we were originally designing the house to try and stay within conformities, we had a design at twenty eight feet. I also had my architect do a three D rendering of that. The end result of that kind of made the house look like it was squished on itself. The dormers didn't match. The roof lines didn't match. While we didn't need a variance, it it really ruined the aesthetic from the front of the home. It would be fine to build. We could squeeze it in. It wouldn't change the bedroom count or anything like that. It just really did aesthetically diminish the the way you would look at the house. And I don't have that three D rendering in front of me. I think I did submit copies of it. Sandy, you can correct me if I'm wrong. But I think I did at one point submit printed and digital copies of the mock rendering of a lower home.
The changing of the ridge really affected the aesthetic value of the design.
So, okay, there were three plans, an original plan, which was taller, another plan, which was shorter, and the plan today, which is still taller. And why is it still taller than the existing peak?
Well, I added that dormer. If you look at, if you guys have it in front of you, if not, I will pull my little picture up. The dormer here with a small window adds a nice farmhouse, low country modern look. If you get rid of this dormer, which is what I did, just even a little bit, it really squishes this section here with the board and baton front. That itself, I think, takes away from the home. So if I took this and just shorten this roof line, I would still net, you know, the same bedroom count. Nothing really would change interior wise. But when you walk across the street and you look at the home, the way it looks is surprisingly worse, even if you just shrunk it by a foot up here. Because this section over here really is fine. It's this section that really encroaches to our to our variance request.
You you realize though that you're putting an extra two feet and you're cutting your front yard setback by three and a half feet, which is already ten feet inside of what's what's allowed. So putting another two, putting another two feet over above what's allowed, three and a half feet for the closer to the road is really going to add to the bulk to the street.
Well, I'll have my civil engineer testify to that, but we have the the aerial exhibit as well. He is, he will be much more qualified to to explain, but it looks like most of the homes in the surrounding area are not touching that required setback of thirty.
Okay, I'm going to make a suggestion. I'm going to suggest that somebody show us a plan that shows the existing house, what you propose to add and try and help us understand where these are prudent design decisions based on the existing structure. I'm looking at photos of the house. I'm looking at the picture that Mr. Nick is holding up. They don't even look anywhere close to similar. I certainly recognize that you're trying to preserve what's there. And I think that that's certainly something the board needs to consider, but I'd like to see them together. Can you show us architecturals and show us where you're adding and where you're taking away and where you're trying to find this compromise?
I can explain it. I'm on my iPad, so I don't have the ability to do that, but I can explain it as best as I can if that would help. Or I don't know if that would be wasting anybody's time if Christine would prefer or Greg would prefer to do that. He did do so as well. So, oh, this is good. Okay. So this is the existing home. It is in black and white. So if you just bear with me, yes.
Can I make a suggestion, Mr. Von Arx? Can we, if we have these photos, can we mark them? Of course. Nick can identify them and then as he refers them, we can refer to exhibit numbers. Okay?
Okay, let us, let us mark as A four a sheet consisting of two photographs, black and white, showing, I'll ask Mr. Nick to describe what it shows.
So photographs of property taken one eighteen twenty one. That's the existing structure. It looks like sorry?
From the hiring and grow report, Mr. Irene.
Is that where they they were taken from? Okay.
Yes.
All right. So were they submitted separately to the board, Mr. Nick? We have those.
The date should be November eighteenth. I missed the one in my reports. My apologies. It should be November eighteenth, twenty twenty one. They're in my planning review report. Page. Page twelve.
So, so, Mr. Nick, the photos that you're referring to were the photos that you obtained from the hiring group report?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and we're just going to mark that as exhibit A dash four, two black and white photographs, November eighteen, two thousand twenty one, from the hiring group report. Thank you.
I think you can go ahead, Mr. Nick. Thank you. Okay, so what I'm looking at is the existing structure. You have the front door going up the four steps. If you're looking at the top photo into a sunroom or a mudroom. And then on the left side, you have the dilapidated patio. That white door leads into the kitchen. That is what we have the setback of, what is it, five point five existing? Yes. So in the new renderings, we're actually not doing anything except building up on top of that. And then we will be pushing the porch out over and then around to the front door to give it that wraparound look. So the way the existing structure stands now, we are using as much as we can. We are using that entire existing structure. We'll be putting where the current existing dilapidated chimney is, we'll be putting the garage with the new master bedroom above and we will be bumping the rear out, I believe, four feet. Obviously, we'll put a new driveway in and landscape. But the goal was to use as much of that existing home as possible. Unfortunately, the the setbacks for the issue is we're currently, if I did anything to pretty much the front or the side of the home, I'm exacerbating a nonconformity right off the bat. But in order to have a four bedroom home for a nice family, the goal was to build where it is because then I have a nice open yard in the back. I can do a cool stone patio. If they submitted for a pool, you know, there is room for a pool. I have no intention of putting one in. But there is a nice yard for a small family. That was the goal. I didn't want to do a drive through or a breezeway. You run into the issue of taking away a ton of landscaping and yardage and greenery from a family when you do that.
Okay, so so, Mr. Nick, I just want to, I just want to continue to tease out this thread. So your current front yard setback is twenty feet. The requirement is thirty in this zone. The proposed setback is sixteen point four. So I'm understanding that you're building a new porch that is three feet, six inches in front of the existing structure. And you're extending that laterally to the north across the front of what is now the kitchen and the white door, which is probably larger than three point six feet when it goes to that direction, right?
Yes, but it pulls rear towards the rear yard, so it's not pushing or encroaching into that front yard setback.
I don't understand that.
It runs in a vertical horizontal line in this and then it hells to the kitchen. It doesn't encroach any farther into your front yard setback. It's the same setback. I have no problem getting rid of the porch if if you really find it to be an issue. If if you believe that it would look better without a front porch, I can leave it as is and just do the front four steps as existing. If that's something you would prefer.
You're you're way ahead of us, Mr. Nick. So on the left hand side of the house where you have a white door that goes into the kitchen. Yes, you testified that you were going to build immediately above that and then not expand that structure to the front. Is that correct?
We want to expand it so it's parallel with the existing structure on the front by the front door.
So you'll be actually moving the front of the structure forward to match the front of the structure where the front door is?
Correct, but not encroaching any farther into that existing nonconformity.
Okay, so where you exacerbate a preexisting nonconformity, it's a new nonconformity. So that's a new variance. So you've taken your twenty and turned it into sixteen point four because you've come three point six feet forward. And then as you come forward there, that's a separate variance that you're triggering because you're building, you don't just get that line because you got it at twenty feet. But, okay, you're moving the front of that to twenty feet and then you're building a three point six feet porch across the front.
Yeah, I don't want to misspeak. I do have the construction drawings.
I have them over here.
Can you just double check? In your, in your construction, excuse me, in your construction plans, you've got that kitchen wall still recessed from the front facade. That's how it looks to me anyhow.
Perfect. I'm sorry, guys. I must be getting the the old drawings messed up with the new drawings. I'm sorry. That's my fault. We did change the design quite a bit to try and conform. So, yes, we are not touching that. We're just going straight up. So Todd, to answer your question, no, we're not pushing that section of the building forward. It's just the porch.
Okay, yeah, only thing that came forward was that from three foot six.
Okay, so the three point six foot porch in the front is not really usable for much more than a walkway, but you're going to move around that front extension to an area in front of what is now the kitchen and the white door, which is going to give you a porch area that's usable, correct?
Correct.
Okay, now, so so that addresses the issue of, and with regard to the the garage, what is the garage going to be pinned against in terms of the setback?
That will be flush with the entryway door.
Brush with the entryway door. Okay. And with, so so the next question relates to the side yard setback. So that area over there where the kitchen is in the white door, that is the the area where we need the deviation from the setback. Is that correct? Mr. Von Arx, can you clarify that?
I believe the side yard setback on the northerly side is presently five point five. And the proposal is to create it at five point seven.
How does that happen if we're reusing the structure? Why isn't it just five point five?
You know the answer to that? I'm 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 referring, deferring to. Um I'm 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 referring, deferring to Mr. Nick.
I'm looking at the construction drawings and I am not seeing a deviation in what's existing towards changing.
By side construction, uh a site plan shows five, five on the old site and five, seven on the new site, but I don't see any
different. Might be the roof line. Because I'm not seeing my my walls, my exterior walls um pushing out farther than what's currently existing.
Okay, look, I'm not trying to create confusion. I'm trying to understand it. The application before us tonight makes an argument that the existing structure is gonna be preserved, and therefore the board should take into consideration that it's there, and you're interested in preserving as much of it as possible when we look at your renovation plan. I'm trying to understand what we're working with, what practically you can do with it to try and frame the discussion for the board so that they can understand what you're proposing and the magnitude of it. The next thing relates to the height, the ridge height. So you're not changing the existing ridge. You're proposing to add what you called a dormer, which is a gable moving towards the front of the house. You're proposing to put the ridge approximately where the existing one is. But you've not really explained why it's any higher than the peak. It doesn't necessarily matter because it's a deviation regardless because it's supposed to be thirty. But you explained that you then moved it down to twenty-eight and it didn't look good. Did you try it at thirty?
Yes. It's a similar design as the twenty-eight, but it uh you have the front over the front door. You have the roof line over the front door. It still looks squish. Um I would love to be able to get you guys the renderings, but I don't have them, and I can certainly send them to Sandy to distribute.
Yeah, I I don't, I don't understand why it looks squished. Um we we do a lot of this. You put that that into the existing ridge, you can drop it, you can design whatever angle you want. It may have to be a little narrower at the bottom, but I'm not sure why it has to be squished. You also have, go ahead.
I'm sorry, Todd. Would I be able to have Greg Domaluski uh speak on behalf of that specifically?
Yeah, absolutely. We we can hear all the testimony. I I'm trying to frame all of these things are context for what you're doing, but without the board understanding where you're deviating and why, we can't absorb the meaning of what you're telling us. And I'm trying to help the board understand uh because I don't understand, and I assume they are not following as well, is to how these pieces come together. Um above the garage, what what is the ridge height above the garage?
That would be a question for my civil engineer.
Okay.
Can I ask you another question, uh Mr. Leader? Uh you said that the garage was going to be flush with the front facade of the house, but again, on your site plan, I show it setback seven point seven feet.
Right. Yeah, I think.
Yeah, I I think if I go through this, I think I'll clarify a lot for the board.
All right, Mr. Von Arx.
Okay, well, perhaps we should uh bring in our engineer at this point because his testimony, I think, will be helpful to resolve some of these questions. So if we can call Gregory uh Demolaski, please.
I'm here. Can you guys hear me?
We can, I can hear you.
Okay, great.
Could you give us your full name, sir, spell your last and your address for the record?
Absolutely. My name is Gregory Domaluski. Last name is spelled D O M A L E W S K I. I'm employed with Midlandic Engineering, and the work address there is Five Commerce Way, Suite two oh one, Hamilton, New Jersey, zero eight six nine one.
If you'd raise your right hand, we're gonna swear in. You do swear in testimony to give the board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And Mr. Von Arx will spread your credentials on the record, please.
Yes, indeed. Mr. Demolaski, would you please general background?
Sure, I've uh obtained my Bachelor's of Engineering from Stevens Institute of Technology in Hoboken, New Jersey. I've testified before numerous boards in the state. I certainly can um give you a list of them if you like. I am a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey, and my license is currently active.
How long have you been so licensed in New Jersey, Mr. Domaluski?
That is a great question. Um about
Questions, well, questions get harder. They get harder.
Yeah. I would say that's about twelve uh ten to twelve years now. I've been licensed uh engineer in New Jersey.
Thank you.
Any board members have any questions or any problems accepting Mr. Uh
Domaluski.
Demolus, thank you. Uh a- as an expert in engineering. Okay.
Thank you. Uh Mr. Demoluski, um you are the engineer on this project. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Yeah, are you familiar with the um the property in question?
I am.
And are you familiar with the structures that are now on the property?
I am familiar with the structures. I've been to the outside of structures. I have not been inside the actual house itself. Yeah.
And as part of your uh work involved in this project, you have had occasion to make various uh measurements uh for various purposes. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, there's Vince's some questions relative to the height of the uh building as it's now proposed. Would you like to address that issue, please?
Certainly. Um so from talking with uh, you know, Mr. Kennedy, the board engineer, there is a little bit of back and forth going on between my calculations, his calculations. They're both very close. Um and it depends on how many, I guess, spot shots you include in your average. And I'm fine accepting uh Mr. Kennedy's um average that he did. So basically, what happens is when you take the average around the existing house, and if I could, I'd like to share my screen and bring up the plot plan. Is that possible?
Yes, please, if you would.
Okay.
Mr. Irene, you'll call this A five.
This is the plot plan prepared by Gregory B. Domaluski, P E. One sheet, seven twenty-six, twenty-one, last revise October twenty, two thousand twenty-one. Do I have the right one, Mr. Domaluski?
Correct.
Okay, yes, it'll be A dash five, please. Thank you.
Okay, so whatever I should see up on the screen now is the plot plan that we prepared for thirty-three Cedar Ave and Fairhaven. And what you'll see on the left is the existing structure. I'm gonna zoom in if that's okay. So what you see is the existing structure in an L configuration with the um back porch or this little retaining wall extending outside the walkout basement with a couple of stairs, two or three stairs up to grade. And there's the existing shed at the north northern corner of the property, um which has a shed which is to be removed. So the way uh Mr. Kennedy explained, everything's measured for building height, is you take the average of the points around the building. It in this case, it's the L shape, and then you apply that to the, to get your average grade. And then it's from the average grade to that peak that creates the building height. Um and we'll use Mr. Kennedy's um measurements because, like I said, they're very close, but I'd prefer to just go off of his. So it's clear and it's in a letter, and it's uh pretty square for the board. So with the average around those proposed grades, you have an elevation of forty-seven point eight as the existing grade. And when you take the ridge height of seventy-nine point five and subtract that from the forty-seven point eight, you get thirty-one point seven feet of existing building height. Now, to get to the proposed building height, you take this outline of the proposed building, which is more in a cross shape than the L shape. Um you take all the existing points around that building. And when you average them out, Mr. Kennedy came out with an average grade of forty-seven point five as the um average grade. So it's a little different between the, it's point three lower than the uh existing grade. And then with the proposed building height, he has in here in his letter seventy-nine point five as the proposed height minus the forty-seven point five gives you a height of thirty-two feet. Um and actually, when we compared between the architects, so that, I'm sorry, those are the numbers right out of the letter from Mr. Kennedy. And when I had the architect compare from the front door to his ridge, um they are a one-foot difference between the two. So between the two buildings, it goes up about one foot, but because the way the the existing grade is measured, you're incorporating more points on the outside here. So it, and numbers wise, it perceives that it's closer, but it is one foot, one full foot of differential from the existing to the proposed, if you're measuring from the grade at the front door. Um so that's the height differential. Uh but again, when you take the average grades around the perimeter of that building, you do end up with a little different measurement, and we have a proposed building height of thirty-two feet based upon um Jim Kennedy's average grade that he calculated.
So that's very helpful. Uh the question I'd like to ask is, are you then gonna be reframing the entire roof structure?
Yes. So it it's not my decision, however, is my understanding that there's a you know, there's some rot on the eaves and there's some soft um decks up top that they perceive has got your, you know, that the um overall roof structure is gonna be taken off and completely reframed as part of the uh the addition because over the, so um so I, let's go back and first, if we could, if I could walk through the proposed development. And then this may answer some other questions as well, because when you start to look at what, you know, what's being done here as part of the proposed project, you're gonna see the garage is gonna get added on. That needs a whole new roof. There's a small addition off the rear of the house. That needs a new roof. So when you start to look at that, and then um that in conjunction with that original structure being old, um that that roof really should be replaced. Um and as uh you know, Alan had testified before, is that the, you know, doing the the roof as they had proposed, um there's an aesthetic benefit to the project in order to do that um to make it look better. But if I would, if I could, I'd like to walk through the other, you know, proposed development. Go through everything, and then if you guys have more questions, certainly we can, you know, answer them at that time if that's okay.
True thing.
All right. So the the subject property as uh, you know, we talked about is block thirty-one, lot nine. It's eight thousand one hundred thirty-nine square feet, zero point one eight seven acres, and it's located in the B two zone. As uh the attorney stated before, the lot depth is ninety-one point five feet, and it's existing nonconformity, and that locked up is not gonna change. There's no subdivisions per as application. There is a single-family home on the lot, and we are proposing to increase that single-family home. It is a permitted use within the B two zone. We have fronted on Cedar Ave, fiscal chapels to the northwest, and there are residential uses uh immediately to this northeast, the southeast, and across the street. And if I could, I'd like to bring up an aerial exhibit. If that's okay, just to give you a lay of the land um and walk through where our project is in relation to some other residential projects on the street. So if I could share an exhibit as well and mark it in.
And mark this at A six, please.
Sure. And I'll bring that up on screen now. So what you're looking at right now is entitled thirty-three Cedar Ave Aerial Exhibit Block Thirty-One Lot Nine Prepared by Midlandic Engineering, dated two, three, twenty-two, and that's gonna be marked as A six, and it's the uh aerial exhibit. What you see here is we're located on Cedar Ave um just to the south of the um Fisk Chapel there and to the south of River Road, and we're along Cedar Ave between Foreman and Parker Avenue and intersection of uh Fist Tree here. And what you'll see as I zoom in here into our neighborhood is that we have the um our proposed, you know, house here, um which is setback, and I'll go through a setbacks in a minute uh from the street on Cedar Ave. The the structure itself is at twenty feet, and that remains at twenty feet. Um but you'll see what happens here, too, is just take note of the right away here. So the right away line is a continuous line until it gets to our property, and then it bumps out about eight feet towards Cedar Avenue as well. So it's just something to note um for later on. So that the roadway actually does move away from our property as well as you get to the uh the southeast corner or the southern corner of the property here. Um and then you'll see, you know, all the houses along Cedar Avenue directly across the street. Certainly, those houses are much closer than um you know, than the required setback along Cedar Avenue. Um or they're they're closer to Cedar Avenue than our houses. Um the two houses on the corner are Parker Avenue and Cedar Avenue. They have zero foot setbacks uh or near, near zero foot setbacks. And then the uh the houses directly across the street from our house are much closer to the street than our proposed houses. And at this time, I'll go back to the plot plan and I'll walk you through some of those dimensions. Um so the existing house is gonna be rehabbed on the property. We have uh with that existing house, there's some existing nonconformities on the site. The front setback is twenty feet currently where thirty feet is required. The side yard setback is um on one side is five point five feet where seven feet is required. And I'm gonna talk about that in a minute as well because I wanna clarify something there. The height, uh we talked about the height already on that structure, and then the max number of stories, it is currently three stories where two and a half is permitted. And that is from a basement, which is the half-story, then there's two floors of residential use, and then a half-story up in the attic, totaling the three stories. Our proposed use is going to be the same. We're gonna have that half-story in the basement. We're gonna have the two full stories and then another half-story above that, if the board will allow us.
I I'm gonna ask a quick question of Mr. Kennedy. So the reason that we're looking at this as three stories is because this is not a cellar but a basement because it's more than fifty percent exposed, which makes it a half-story, which means that the square footage of the basement is calculated as part of the habitable that's calculated, and then we have an attic on top. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
And then one thing that was touched on before was the accessory structure, the shed, which has existing nonconformity of eight point six feet at the rear where ten feet is required, is going to be removed. So we're going to um improve that. With the proposed renovations to the house, we're gonna have a four-bedroom house. We're gonna have a two-car garage. Um we're gonna have a new front porch. We're gonna have a new driveway, a two-car drive, or two-car wide driveway that goes to a two-car garage. Um we're gonna have a walkout basement at the rear, which uh Mr. Kennedy will talk about the grading in a minute on. Um because I wanna talk to you about how we can improve that. Um but we wanna remove that retaining wall on those steps at the rear of that property. And then what we're gonna have is a walkout of the rear of the house on the main floor level to a small porch to um a walkway down so that people have, you know, more than one way off the main floor. And on the front of the house, we're gonna have that front porch with the walkway across the front of the house down to the new driveway.
So the existing foundation is gonna remain. Is that correct?
The existing foundation, from what I understand, yes, is gonna remain on the existing house. Yes.
But in the rear of the house where you're proposing this walkout basement, you're putting in a new basement because you're
Correct. There's gonna be an addition off the rear of the house back there. Yes.
But the existing, there's an existing walkout basement. Is that correct?
There is, yes.
And the existing walkout basement is kind of in a hole. It has a retaining wall around it, and you have to take steps up to get into the yard.
Correct.
So you're proposing to extend that into the backyard, but maintain the walkout?
Correct.
And so you're gonna remove a lot of soil and change the pitch of the backyard into the house in order to get that walkout condition?
Um not tremendously because that house is coming out ten feet off the rear of the house now. Um so the grade does, you know, slope away from the house, but yes, we will do some regrading to make that work. And we'll talk about that in a minute. Um if I can go through some other things, but.
Mr. Mr. Domaluski, excuse me, what?
Yes.
How high, how high is the ceiling in the new area of the basement that you're adding?
Uh from, I think Dennis would have to answer that question, but I think it's gonna be the same clear height of the existing basement.
That is correct.
Which is, which is what? But you're proposing, you're proposing a bedroom and a bathroom down there as well.
Yes.
So if you're proposing a bedroom and a and a bathroom bathroom down there, uh what what would be the height of that uh of that ceiling, especially where you're you're adding the bedroom and the bathroom?
It finishes at seven foot two, which is existing.
Thank you.
So that's it's five bedrooms then, not four, correct, Mr. Domaluski?
I think Dennis would have to, the architect would have to go through that, that answer.
Okay.
Yes.
Can I get clarification? The yard, the backyard, it pitches away from the house. It goes down as you move across the back or it goes up?
It goes down towards the adjoining property at the rear.
And when you calculated your height for the building, for the as completed structure, did you add in what you're gonna be removing and calculate what the measurements will be once you've changed the topography in the rear?
We did not based upon um Jim Kennedy's advice of just taking the existing grades around the proposed building footprint.
I, I would think the as proposed condition needs to anticipate the removal and the change in topography. But we can address that later.
Sure. So as part of this project right now, we don't have any proposed accessory structures or fencing on the property. As a result of that proposed development, we have a few nonconformities have changed. So the front yard setback reduced from twenty feet to sixteen point four feet. And what that's for is the front wall of the building still stays in the same location. But what we're going to do is we have the elevated walkway or the front porch, if you will, is going to extend just past that. That front facade or that front wall. And the reason for that is, you know, if you're. Coming in or out of the house, you want to have that little covered walkway, a cover from porch, it would definitely be beneficial. You know, there is a way that we could, and it's technicality that, you know, that porch is considered part of the front yard, you know, setback to that is required. And it's calculated to that structure. It's not calculated to the front wall based on the definitions of the ordinance. So that's the reason for the reduction of the front yard setback. The maximum building height is increased. From thirty-one point seven to thirty-two feet. And the, the side yard setback, I know the plan does indicate five point seven feet there. And in reviewing the plan today, I actually did notice that and I didn't catch it unfortunately when I was going to sign the plan. The building is going to be reused. That corner of the building is, you know, that exterior wall is going to be reused. So I would think that the five point five would remain. I think where this came from was, you know, basically one of the cat operators had taken. The architectural plans and just squared off that corner. And didn't take into account the existing building corner, but it should be five point five feet on that corner. It's not going to change that corner of the building. We're not going to. You know, we're not changing those walls out there. That existing wall is going to be to remain.
But you're building above it, correct?
We are building above it. Yes, that's correct.
Likewise, with the front yard setback at twenty, you're going up as well, right?
Correct. That is going up as well, yes.
And how about the garage? Is that going to meet the front yard setback or is that going to be deficient?
So that's efficient. So the garage is setback twenty-seven and a half feet where thirty feet is required.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And then also with that, the maximum floor area is zero point three six where zero point three five is required. Now, I know the board had mentioned, you know, utilizing the proposed grading. As part of the calculation. We had looked at that before and based upon using the proposed grades around the structure. We had calculated that it did turn the basement level into a cellar level. In which case the, the maximum habitable floor area would be reduced, but. At Jim Kennedy's direction, and I agree with him, that we would just use all of his numbers for the average grades. And calculating those average grades and utilizing the existing grade. With the footprint of the proposed structure. And Jim, Jim actually had a great reason for that. And so that basically when you come into town. You know, he said that, you know, we wanted to use those existing grades around the, the proposed buildings. That way you can't. Come up and mound up, you know, three or four or five feet from the street. And use those as your proposed grades and that you should utilize the existing grades. When calculating that building height. And I agree with his synopsis of that.
So you're over on floor area ratio. How many square feet would you need to trim from the house in order to get to point thirty-five?
It is one hundred and. Number one hundred eight point four square feet.
And were there discussions about how to trim the size of the house to conform?
I know the, the owner and the architect have gone back and forth a lot and they felt this is the best house for the property.
Would you, would you address the issue of regrading? I think you and I had a discussion about. Mr. Kennedy's comment about possible pooling in the backyard.
Yes, absolutely. So, so the site currently flows. You know, basically from the curb to the back left property corner and it goes from elevation fifty. In the street and Cedar Ave down to elevation forty-five point four at the, the back left corner of the property. And the, the sort of the grade flows from right to left across the back. Now with the proposed walkout basement with no steps. We have an elevation, the finished floor back there is forty-five point four. And it's almost very close to the back corner of the, of the property. So. You know, Jim had brought up a, a comment in his letter that there may be ponding in that area. And there could be. And what I was going to propose, if Jim's okay with it and accepts it. Is doing some sort of dry well system back there. Where we can have, you know, we can maintain a positive slope away from the house. And then sort of come back up to the property corner. So that way there's somewhere for this water to go to. Get into and then get into the ground and, you know, ultimately. There'd be a overflow or, you know, would, it would still continue to flow in the same direction that it would as if there was no addition put on the house. But it'll get somewhere for that stormwater to go initially, which would be into that recharge pipe and ultimately back into the ground.
Thank you. Mister Domaluski, I'm sorry, but you gave a square footage. Necessary to eliminate if the far was made to conform and I, it was the number one zero eight point four square feet?
That is the number that was in the planner's letter, correct, on page, page eight, note number five.
Thank you very much.
Yep. As far as utilities goes to the house, we're going to reuse the existing utilities that serve the house today. And then of course, as Alan had indicated, right now we have proposed lawn around the site. I'm sure there'll be some sort of foundation plantings, you know, at the time of construction. And then the other thing to note is that there are a couple of trees along the property with the chapel. And we're going to save those trees. You know, we don't show any of those trees as proposed to be removed for this part of, as part of the application. And based upon the construction, it looks like where the foundation is going to be extended. It should be far enough from those trees that all those trees will survive.
Mister Domaluski, I think our planner had mentioned the fact that. There would be a requirement of parking for three or four cars. Whereas the garage would only allow two cars to park. Which would result in the additional cars parking basically in the front yard. Was an effort, was there a consideration to put the entrance to the garage on the side? In order to allow parking towards the back part of the house and away from the, from the front of that.
Yeah, so we, we did talk about that. We certainly could put a driveway off to the right hand side of the house. And have all that parking off that driveway, you know, on the right hand side. It'll bring those, that parking and the cars closer to the adjoining neighbor there. And what it'll also do, it'll increase your impervious coverage. And we just felt it was better to have some greenery and some landscaping in that area or, you know, some grass rather than, you know, paving paradise.
The, the problem is that the lot is slightly oversized at a seventy-five hundred square foot minimum. Where the lot has advantages, it's in the width. And what you're doing is largely concentrating your development in the area that's already developed. I don't see any effort to take advantage of the width. But something like turning that garage door and having the parking back there would do exactly that. I realize everything's a compromise. But the compromise you've made is to preserve yard, but not to try to fit the house inside of some of the advantages to the line.
I can say why I chose not to.
Yeah. Mister Chairman. I'm getting in my ear from Mister Nick that. He would be amenable to, to considering changing the access to the driveway off to the side rather than in the front.
Look, the, the issue is you're coming forward and you're going to the side where you already have a deviation. Where you could build as a matter of right in the center of the lot, you're not pushing the development. So your existing kitchen. If you chose not to develop above it, but rather put something further towards the center of the lot, you wouldn't be asking for variance. That second story is a variance and the second story in the front is a variance. Even the garage is three feet short of conforming it, but it looks like it could conform if you just moved it back. We all recognize the interest in having yard, but we're looking for conformity. And when you ask for a deviation, we need to understand. Why it's necessary on balance. And I'm just observing that you've got a lot of space over here that you're not using for the house.
That's something my client will consider.
A quick question for the engineer. If the. Space that was being added on was added on more. To the rear of the new garage area as opposed to pushing straight out the back of the main part of the structure. And making it shallower, wouldn't that also bring you up to a higher? Existing grade and reduce. Your measurements from grade to the corner? And possibly out of the issue with the, with the height?
Yeah, well, I think part of the issue would be, you know, if you were like where the garage is located right now, if you were to add on behind that. You don't have a connection then to the main floor of the house. You sort of lack that connection. So with the addition off the back of the house, it makes sense with where. You know, with the existing house to add on to that in the back. And, you know, have continuity on that ground floor.
Right, right. I'm saying if you used maybe. Three more feet out behind the garage and pulled in. That center portion a couple of feet. Wouldn't that bring you up like a foot? From the existing grade and change your measurements of the height entirely?
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. If you did three feet, you know, off the back of the garages in addition or trying to use that space, you're going to end up with a hallway. It's not usable space.
It's not built.
Correct.
Built and the space above the garage is not built.
Correct.
It's, it's all, it's all fresh. So you wouldn't end up with a hallway you'd end up with. Alright, I, I was just asking if that would change your, your problem with the.
Yeah, I'd have to, I'd have to defer that to the architects. I'm not an architect, but. You know, I'd imagine that the, the spaces. You know, I'd have to defer that to him, honestly.
Right, but from an, from an engineering perspective, if you look at that forty-six foot. Grade line that goes across just the back. Couple feet of the center of the house. If you were to pull the center of the house back to that line, would that not? Significantly change your height computations?
Well, based on the computations that we have now, we were told to use the existing grades around the footprint. If we were to use, if, if we were to use the proposed grades around our footprint. We would comply with a couple of the variances. One would be.
Those grades are existing grades.
I'm sorry, what was that?
What you're showing us here are those proposed grades or existing grades?
What I have here in dark in the black are the proposed grades. And when you use those proposed grades to calculate your building height. It doesn't get you under the building height, but what it does get you under is the maximum number of stories and the floor area ratio. Are both in compliance.
Greg, you've, this is, this is Jim. I can't see myself. Hopefully you can hear me, but. Greg, you, you've said that a couple of times now, but at the bottom of page two, we actually did that calculation. We created a proposed grade plane using the proposed grade, even though that's not how the borough does it. And it's still, it results in a basement.
Okay, did you look at my October twentieth grading statement for thirty-three Cedar Ave?
Sure, yes. But did you, so I mean, there's a distinguishing point here as to you, your methodology used in the grading statement. And the methodology that's used by the board. So if you want to go into that, you can. But I know that you just wanted to use my numbers. So if you're going to use my numbers.
Yeah, no, I'm fine with using your numbers. Just the board members are asking me, you know, using the proposed average grade around the building. I agree to use your numbers. Those are variances required. And the board is asking if we were to use those elevations around the building, what would it result in?
Okay, so if you use the, the same. Methodology, not using your tin, not using weighted averages or anything. You still result in an average grade plane of forty-eight point four.
Yeah, did you, did you look at figure one, the average elevation? Block thirty-one lot nine, thirty-three Cedar Ave, that's included in the grading statement? And did you take an average of those points that we've shown around the building?
Yes, that's exactly how we did it. And.
When I took those numbers, I wound up with an average grade of forty-seven point six zero.
Okay, Greg, did you look at the corners that I used? Because you added corners in there that aren't corners. So the methodology has to hold true. This, we can't choose and pick and wait. We're just using corners.
Okay, let me see. Let me just, I mean, I could run through your numbers really quick if you like.
Well, I mean, I'm not asking you to do that, but I just don't want you to miss leave, you know.
Well, perhaps this is, perhaps this is an issue that we should take into consideration. And have some discussion about the whole, the whole issue here.
Well, I mean, I can tell you from my perspective that, that we try and stay consistent. And that when we spoke with, and, and look, we've been doing this for years. In Fairhaven, using existing grades to calculate the existing and proposed building height. And the whole purpose of that is exactly what Greg said was to avoid mounding. The property so as to get a higher building height. The only time you use proposed grade. Is if you have, say, an approved subdivision with an approved building height already. So let's say when the gentry was, was approved, there were. Building pads that were approved on that regraded plan because new roads went in, new infrastructure. That would be an approved grade and the buildings would be measured from the approved grade. When it comes down to single units, there is no approved proposed grade. So we still go back to existing grade. This is how the zoning officer has done it. This is how. The public can readily review it because we have the corners. I'm not saying Greg's use of a surface and a tin, that, that's very accurate. But it's not something that can be checked or understood really by the neighbors that come to review the application. So. That. If you want to get into the details, we certainly can, Mr. Von Arx, but that's how we do it. I think it's reasonable. Basically this building is, is pushing out over a hole. And that's creating this change in grade. If, if Greg wants to go through. His calculations for the weighted average to try and ameliorate the variance, that, that's fine. But essentially, as you move to the right and develop to the right on the parcel, you are putting building in a hole. When that happens, the existing grade. Increases the building height. Now you'll see a fifty now, so they are filling the front of the building. They're filling, increasing the garage floor. But all those changes to propose grade don't really. Fall into this calculation.
Okay. Is there anything further that the board may wish to ask the engineer?
So Mister Von Arx, I'm jumping in here and I apologize. But Greg was discussing the potential for a dry well. Before we go that route, have any soil borings been taken? And where would he propose such a dry well? And in addition, you know, the fist chapel is about fifty feet away from the property line. So any mounding or, or any change to the groundwater elevation could have an impact not only on this chapel, but. Any of the area homes with. A basement. So I, I just want to be particularly sensitive to the existing. Structures before we do a dry well. And then if the dry well were to clog. What happens? What, what, there is no, the overland flow, I guess, would just be out through the back corner, but it could also come back into your finished basement. So I, I, I think before we throw that out as a solution, we just need more detail as to that solution, whether it would work or not.
Certainly, I can answer the question about soil borings. No infiltration tests have been done on the property. I did look at the USGS soils mapping and his map is B soils for what it's worth. So I think your infiltration rates will come back that they're acceptable for a dry well.
Okay, how about groundwater elevation?
Have not tested that yet.
Okay. Okay. Okay, Mr. Von Arx, ready to move forward?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, Mr. Chairman, if I may, just one thing, so I don't lose sight of it. The, the rear yard setback, I thought someone earlier had indicated that it was going to be deficient twenty-five feet. The, the plan shows it, I believe, conforming at thirty. Can you help me with that, Mr. Double Skey?
Yeah, we have the rear, no, we have the rear setback shown as thirty-one point one zero feet and a rear setback of thirty feet.
So it'll conform.
It's conforming with the structure, yes.
All right. Thank you very much. I must have misunderstood.
Mr. Irene, while you're talking about setbacks, I, I just want to point out for the board that the, the graphic front setback line that's shown on the plan is actually at thirty-five feet, although it's measured thirty. So just, um, know that the actual front setback is five feet in front of that line.
Yeah, I just sketched it on an approximate location.
Thank you.
On the worship.
And if I may, before you leave the basement, there's no kitchen proposed for the basement. Is there no cooking facilities in the basement? We have a bedroom, a bathroom, a separate means of ingress and egress. Are there any kitchen or cooking facilities proposed in the basement?
No. Can I have clarification on that front yard setback issue that Mr. Kennedy just raised?
Sure. So I can, I can just explain what happened here. Um, when the drafter drew in the front yard setback line, they drafted that line in as thirty-five feet, although it's labeled thirty feet. So the front yard setback line should be five feet closer towards the front of the property.
Okay.
So it should show up in about this location where I just sketched it and read on the plan.
That's included in our planning review. Um, our planning comment number six, we note that any revision to the plan should address that inconsistency. Because it can be misleading.
Yeah, we will address that.
You, you know, the import, just, you know, you guys are all, you know, repeat attendees. The issue is that you create the, the image of a really small building footprint. That five feet is material. Um, you know, as I'm looking at this, I'm, I'm struggling with what you need. And you've got an extra five feet that is improperly shown on these plans. That, that's, that's not good.
Okay, we will, we will, we will revise the plan as necessary.
It shouldn't be presented this way. Just to be entirely clear. It, it, it's not accurate. It, it doesn't, we've just spent a half hour talking about the site plan and it shows a building footprint that's completely inaccurate.
The building footprint is accurate. The line that was drawn in for the front yard setback was drafted wrong by a drafter. And we'll fix it.
No, the building footprint is not right. The, the available building footprint within the requirements of the ordinance is five feet short. It creates the impression that you could build very little here, but there's five feet additional. Is the rear correct?
I could measure it right now if you like on screen, but yeah, so the rear is correct at thirty feet.
Why don't we check?
Sure. It appears correct.
Okay.
At thirty feet.
I have a question, if that's okay. I'm not sure if it's for the architect or for the engineer, but can you explain how with the change of grade, you're able to eliminate the stairs leading from the basement to get a flat walkout? Cause I'm not sure I understand how that's possible without having to add stairs there. And if so, um, whether those stairs would encroach within the thirty-foot rear yard setback.
Sure, so I can cover that. Um, basically what happens is there's additional off the rear of the property. So if you look on the existing, this walkout here with that wall around the walkout is between the forty-seven and forty-six contour here. And when you bring it over onto the proposed, that rear walkout becomes much closer to the forty-six contour here. Um, so you would have to cut about six inches of dirt around this area to get this walkout to work. Um, so we are proposing to bring this forty-six contour from around the rear of the building to the side of the back of the building bump out. So it does bring down the salvation of the forty-five point four at the rear of the, uh, walkout basement to give you that walkout without any stairs.
So you, so it does, the walkout does work based upon your grading plan without needing any stairs? And you don't need to increase the basement floor or anything to get to that?
No, that's, that's, that's the same elevation of the basement floor is at today, and that's what we're proposing. Um, as Mr. Kenny did indicate, it does create a flat area in the back of the property though.
Okay.
Uh, so we're going to work to address that.
Okay, so I wanted to make sure I was understanding, um, how the walkout basement works. Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
If there are no other, uh, questions from Mr. Donaleski, I would like to call our next witness.
Sounds good.
Okay, so I will call Christine Caphone, please. Miss Caphone?
She was with us before. Hopefully she still is.
She's in the audience. Sandy, you see her? Pull her phone.
Hi, good evening.
Hello, if you give us.
Are you having trouble hearing me? Yes.
Yes. Yeah, we were having trouble making connections.
Yes, Mr. Von Arx, um, can we take a break and, and speak for a minute?
You and I?
Yes.
Will, will the board allow us, um, five minutes?
To take a quick five-minute break?
Sure.
Great, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. So we'll have to mute this.
Yeah.
Mr. Von Arx, you are not muted. Please be sure you are.
Uh, yes, indeed.
Do you have any administrative stuff to take care of?
Minutes? Yes, we should do that. Um, I have one, one administrative item that we can do. It's the approval of minutes. From January sixth, twenty twenty-two, I have reviewed said minutes and submitted no changes. Therefore, I will make a motion to approve the minutes from the January sixth meeting.
Second.
Mr. Nick Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Quigley?
Absent.
Mr. Ridgway? Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Dr. Lawfer?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsella?
Yes.
Mr. Leader?
Yes.
Ms. Quigley is back.
Were we taking attendance? I thought we had a break.
And we're voting on the minutes from the last meeting.
Sorry about that. Yes.
Thanks.
Well, I got. Um, we have a discussion for later when we go into executive.
All right. Yeah. Yeah, let's take five. Uh, it is right now. Five, eight fifty-four. We'll see you back here at eight fifty-nine.
I think the board took a five-minute break.
Oh, yeah, they probably did.
Yeah, that was much, uh, much quicker than five minutes.
Yes.
You guys hear me?
Uh, we can hear you, yes.
Yeah, just so you know, Benu, the licensed architect's been on the whole time. He's just listening. So if you need him, he's here, but I'm more familiar with the project.
But we're going to ask for an adjournment so that we can address all of these issues.
Okay, yeah.
Thanks.
All right, no problem.
Actually, that will help Chris.
Yeah. I'm happy to speak with, if it's Jim, if I need to speak with Jim regarding what they want. Yeah. Is that the end of things? Just don't work with them.
Of course. We, we, well, we can talk a little bit after we get through this.
Sure. I guess.
That was on to me.
Do we want to mute before everybody comes back? Just so we're not chatting up a storm.
You're missing. Oh, Pat, nevermind.
Todd, you have sound?
Now I do. I wanted to comment that Mike Irene's been sitting here getting paid the whole time. What?
Overtime.
We need drinks. COVID sucks.
Oh, indeed. My liquor cabinet is right behind me.
So we're not open to the public right now, or are we?
We are open to the public.
Great. Can we just do a roll call, please?
Mr. Nick Chesney.
Yep.
This is Quigley, Mr. Ridgeway.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan.
Yeah.
Dr. Lauffer.
I'm here.
Mr. Kinsella.
Yeah.
Mr. Shavetti.
Yeah.
Mr. Leader.
Here. Want to comment that Susan O'Brien is still here. Susan has her pay too. Let's give Susan an opportunity to make any comments. She's waited long enough. She might have something, but let's go ahead and do the business of the board, please.
We're gonna do our thing first?
Oh, I'm sorry. We did roll call, right?
Yeah.
All right.
Okay. Um. So as per discussion, I'm going to make a motion to appoint CME as the Board Engineer for 2022, subject to contingent on successful negotiation of contract.
Second.
Any discussion? Nope. All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Nick Chesney.
Yes.
This is Quigley, Mr. Ridgeway.
Yeah.
Mr. Ryan.
I'm staying standing. Thank you.
Dr. Lauffer.
Yes.
Mr. Kinsella.
Yes.
Let's see. Mr. Shavetti.
If was that because Ms.
I'm trying to figure that out. Mrs. Quigley, I'm trying to figure that out too.
Uh-huh. Yes.
And Mr. Leader.
Yes.
Make a motion to defer the decision on the Board Planner until the March meeting.
I don't know that we need a motion, but I think we should just announce the fact that we've made the decision that we're not going to move forward with the planner this evening.
Okay.
Um, so I know that Paul had emailed with Adam being gone. Was Adam a voting, full voting member, regular member? Was he an alternate?
He was a full member.
Okay. And so who are the alternates presently? Paul's still an alternate?
Alternate one is Kinsella and alternate two is Shavetti.
And is who is here first? Paul?
I don't know if I understand the question. They're listed as alternate one and alternate two. So one goes in first before two.
So Paul's one because he was here before Al.
Most recently.
Okay.
Good, Sandy. Just tell us who you like better. That's really what I'm asking. I'm trying to understand what we do from here. And so Paul, in response to your question, the way we typically do it is people slide in so that the new member would be brought in as an alternate. And the first alternate would then become the full voting member into the old seat. Now, what that does is it messes up the term because you get the balance of the term as opposed to whatever you might have had. But, you know, that's the way we typically do it, and that's what you'd like to do, right?
Yeah, no, it was just a little confusing earlier, but that's fine. That's what I assumed because that's what I joined. I was number two and then Skip moved up and then Al came in and I'm number one, number two. So I was just kind of getting, you know, what the clarification was.
Yeah, you're both number one to me. I haven't spoken to the mayor yet about this, but I will, and I'll get all this buttoned up. Okay.
Thank you.
Um, there was no other business, was there?
Yeah, open to public.
Yeah, yeah. Does the entire public have any questions or comments? You got to raise your hand, Susan, if you want to. She's not going to take the bait. Maybe she's not really there.
You know she's there. Todd, I have a, I have a comment. Are we going to do something to recognize Adam's time on the board?
Yeah, so, so we do normally do that, and I think it's a terrific tradition, and I think we should do it. Adam's great. It's going to be a big loss. So Michael, could we work up a resolution, please, to, for consideration in the March meeting?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone have anything further? Well, I do want to thank John and Peter and Skip for reviewing all the applications, the RFPs. I know a lot of effort went into this, and I really appreciate that. I know everybody does. And I'm excited about having a process that continues to improve for the benefit of the residents, and I think that's terrific. Mr. Chairman, just a reminder, as I understand it, we also have a meeting a week from today, so just keep everybody on their radar. Sandy, what's, what's on the agenda for that meeting?
There's one application on the agenda for Ethan McCarter. It's an addition. Sullivan, thank you. Yep, Sullivan.
Great.
So I'll be sending out the information for tomorrow, and I'll be sending the application information out, and I'll be sending you, Todd, the agenda tomorrow for the meeting so that we can get that up on the website.
I look forward to this. Thank you.
Are you use the 10th? Is that right?
Yep, the 10th.
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
All right. Anything else for the good of the order? Okay. Well, thanks, everybody. Motion to adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Good night, all.
Okay. Bye, everybody. Thanks, Mike. Thanks, Sandy.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone.